All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I will take nomination for Chair of the CSSU.
I would like to nominate Colleen McKinnon.
Second?
Second.
Over here, Kristen Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Vice Chair, take it away.
Yay.
Thank you very much, everyone. And thank you for another long meeting today. I know everyone's been going strong since early this morning, so we'll try to be efficient. As you've noticed, we pulled a common topic off the agenda, but we do have a couple things to add to the agenda. But first, let's take care of board and organization and committee appointments. I'd like to take nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Jean for Vice Chair.
Are there other nominations? All those in favor of Jean for Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. I've been listening all night.
Need a nomination for Clerk?
I'm going to nominate Kelly.
Is there a-
You're so surprised, Kelly. Part of my day.
Is there a second?
I'll second everything. It's a town meeting, you're just appointed.
Are there other nominations? All those in favor of Kelly Bond for Clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, thank you very much, Kelly. And Kelly's going to work with Joan Lennis on learning the ropes. And now we're going to, as far as committee appointments, oh wait, Treasurer, I'm sorry, we need to do Treasurer. Meg Hart-Smith is no longer putting her name in that ring for Treasurer. We need a nomination for Treasurer.
I can't nominate, but I thought Jed Graff would be honored to be your Treasurer.
Yes, we do.
I nominate Jed. Oh, perfect.
Second and second.
Jed Graff is ex-Board Member, Chair, CSSU Board Chair, Shelburne Board Member, Shelburne Board Chair.
He was on our Board for about 12 or 13 years and went off about three years.
So the Treasurer's never a Board Member?
It's not a Board Member, it's someone from outside the community and they make sure that the money funnels through perfectly, so it's part of the checks and balances in the state for our Boards. And Meg Hart-Smith did it for three years. Three years.
Whoever Meg Hart-Smith is.
So all those in favor of Jed Graff for Treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And thank you to Jed. As far as committees go-
Do you want to do that now?
Pardon me?
I just wanted to say, before we move on and skip it, for those of you who don't know, Meg Hart-Smith, she was a longtime Board Member at both Williston and CBU. Very good, very data-intensive person, could, you know, very, a huge advocate for public education. And when she decided to step off the Board, she decided, she accepted being Treasurer, which is kind of a thankless job, but it's so important to our financial integrity and it's really the final eyes over all the numbers. And she did a great job and she's moving out of state, otherwise I think she would do it forever. But we, she was, I just want to thank her publicly for a long, many years of service and doing a great job at it every day, so.
And she did both CSSU and CBU.
Yep, that's true, yep.
And Williston. So Jean's had a long history with her?
Yeah. Williston's losing the great public service.
Thank you, Jean. As far as committee work goes, we have the Administrative Comp Review Committee. We have scheduled one more meeting of those who have been on the committee, and I'd like to wait until our next meeting if we want to reshuffle that a little bit, because we'll probably pull that committee together again in the fall, in early fall, so if we could maybe wait until after our committee meets one more time just to pull together what we need to do for that. And I'm looking at other committee members who've served on that, you're good with waiting? Okay. And the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we've had that and we're concluding our work and we don't need to do that appointment for a while, so let's hold on that. And Legislative Breakfast, we have a small committee, those folks, you haven't done your work yet, so you're still committed to it, I'm assuming, and we've got Kelly, Josh, Bob Finn, Kristen Wright. So I'm assuming that we'll just finish that work and then when we need another committee, pull together for next year, we'll do that. The Paperless HR Data System, we sort of had a subcommittee that was Kathy Stockman and Kevin Maran, and that's really at will for the administration. And Kathy and Kevin, you willing to continue to serve in that role if you get called on?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the two people? If you need it.
That's what the Board wants, yes.
Okay. Negotiations Planning, Lorna and I have been serving on that committee and still doing its work, and we're going to add an executive session to the end of this meeting, so we'll talk about appointments to negotiations, planning, committee meetings at the, or at the end of this meeting, in executive session. And then we had a committee for Food Service, Holly Malik, Paul Lamberson, Tim Williams, Giovanna Fupero, and Adora Fraser. Those were just reps from various districts, it wasn't necessarily the SU, so I don't believe we need to do anything as an SU Board.
I would agree, the only one that needed to be sent in tonight was Heinsberg, because Paul's no longer a Board Member, but he's generously agreed to continue to serve in that capacity for the school, so I think they took care of that.
Well, we're waiting. We're pushing. So that's it for committee work at this point, so no news.
Outcomes, Local Standards Board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Local Standards Board?
Local, oh, yes, Local Standards Board and Outcomes. This is why they both stand on the other side of me, so I get it for both of you. Outcomes Committee. And we've had-
I think I'm currently the CSSU rep to that committee, which I think would just be a reappointment, I think otherwise they were all Board Reps.
Otherwise it was local. Yep. And it was Lyda? Lynn was on that.
So your Board will have to appoint a rep to that committee? They've had it all. Yeah, everybody.
And with the Outcomes Committee, that work, my understanding is that we're going to try to do some wrap-up of that at our retreat, or do some work related to that at the retreat, so maybe if there's a need for reshuffling of who does what with that committee, that might be a time after that. Do you want to? Well, I think the biggest piece is that, that committee sat on a set of outcomes and then said, depending on what the indicators look like, we will need to add more specificity to the outcomes. So if the indicators come back and look like they measure what they were hoping, then the outcomes will stay the same. So there will be a need to review the outcomes and the indicators to see if that's a final draft of the outcomes. Is that right, Jean? Does that sound right?
Yep.
And with that work was going to happen- It's the administrators right now that are working on the indicators. Administrators are working on it now, and we're made to go into, to look at it as a Board at the retreat, correct? So we can revisit that. Because I imagine that there'll be a need for some committee work that's ongoing as implementation happens and we start figuring out how's it going, so we'll need to do some probably individual Board reappointments to some kind of committing, is my guess.
I'd be interested in seeing the charts for that committee, just so I understand what they're, what they're working, maybe for all committees, essentially.
Yeah, that's a good point. So maybe with the next Board meeting, before we hit the retreat, we can do a revisit of the charge and Megan, I know that you were doing a lot of work with that, revisit the, maybe get to the CSSU Board, the charge, and just the latest draft. Of the outcomes? Yeah. I'm thinking about two. Is that good?
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay. Outcomes and indicators and Elaine, where am I beginning up?
Regional Standards Board.
Oh, Regional Standards-
Local Standards Board.
Local Standards Board. Marilyn Richardson has agreed to serve in that role again, but I suppose we should have a formal motion to reappoint Marilyn Richardson to the Local Standards Board as our Board Rep.
I'd like to make that motion.
And a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And it's, Marilyn's a great person to have in that position, she does a lot of work at the state level, working with higher ed institutions on Standards Board teacher prep programs, and so she's intimately involved in this at a very minutia, particular level that anyone would want to be at. So she's a good person, happy to ask. Okay. Anyone have another idea for a committee? Okay, let's do introductions. And Kevin, let's start with you.
I'm Kevin Maran.
Want to say your name and what word you represent on?
I'm Kevin Maran, I'm from the Williston School District.
Detective Sophie Williston.
David Raffens, CBU.
Lauren Jimson, CBU.
Bob Finn, Shelburne.
Eric Beal, Charlotte.
Kristen Wright, Charlotte.
Lisa Falcone, Heinsburg.
Keith Roberts, from Heinsburg.
Bob Mason, Chief Operations Officer with the Central Office.
Elaine Higgin, Superintendent. Colleen McKinnon, Heinsburg.
Jean Jensen, CBU, Williston.
Joshua Diamond, Williston School District.
Kathy Stockman, Shelburne.
Russ Caffrey, Shelburne.
Kelly Bowen, St. George.
Molly McClaskey, Director of Curriculum.
Megan Roy, Director of Student Support Services.
Cindy Canham and Ora, Director of Human Resources.
And I'm Sandy Raymond, Executive Assistant at the Central Office.
Thank you all, it's nice to see familiar faces and new faces, so we're all in back again faces. Yeah, a few Board Members were off for a while and back here, so it's nice to have a reshuffling. So adjustments to the agenda, just like to add a couple items. One, for a discussion matter, 7.2, and this one I would call Membership of the CSSU Board and Discussion About Adding, the potential to add a fourth member of the CBU Board to the CSSU Board. So that's 7.2, we're going to add that as a discussion item. And then 8.2, Bob Mason sent us something yesterday, we need to appoint as a designated person for ensuring compliance with, from each school, facility supervisors for each school, appoint them as the designated purpose for ensuring compliance with asbestos management plans. So that'll be 8.2. And 11, Executive 7, I'm sorry, 11.0, Executive Session, we have 11.1 Personnel and 11.2, like to add Negotiations Update. Is there anything else, Cindy?
The Board does not need to discuss 7.1.3 or 7.1.6.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, Cindy, is that because they're not coming forward or because you made no changes?
Because they're not coming forward tonight? You can discuss them if you want.
No, we just had to discuss a little bit the CBU Boards, even if there's no, even if the Board's recommending no changes, it doesn't mean the Board may not want to discuss them.
All right, well then 7.1.3 is not coming forward purposely, 7.1.6, the committee discussed and had no changes, so if you wanted to discuss that tonight, you could leave that on. We'll leave 7.1.6 on the agenda, just see if there's any more things up. Okay. So 5.0, 5.1, we do not have any presentations, and it's probably a good idea, the hour after everyone's finished with their other board work, so we'll make that recommendation for next year, continuing that practice. And it was tight to get here at 7:30, that's, no. 7.0, Discussion Matters, 7.1, Policy Review, 7.1.1, Job Description and Staffing, Cindy wanted to just point out. She's getting over six points. Thank you. Hour, hour to be had. 6.0, Reports to the Board. Cindy, you'd have time to think about that. You can roll it over, Bobby. 6.1, the Central Office Leadership Team Report. Elaine? I would just point out that in the crudos this month, I had a note that Sharon Davidson was published, and I just wanted to show you, it's like, you know, and she is really being recognized in the next year with the work that she's doing. This is from the partners in broad, and they're doing stuff, we can all pass this around. I know the Williston Board members probably are all listening. And the other thing that I would just point your attention to, the Chitting County School Transportation Study, this is a study that Wynne Goodrich, who is the Assistant Superintendent in South Burlington, is doing as part of his doctoral dissertation. And so he is studying what are the ways that we might work together as a Chitting County, not just the school systems, but the community's transportation. I don't know what will come of it, what we've signed on. For our part, it just means that we give down the, head of the data, so that we can punch the numbers and see what that would mean. And I also thought, just in tonight, while I was sitting here, was rereading Molly's and Megan's piece, and I was like, that's a really nice summary of all the work that's going on, so if you didn't have a chance to read it, I'm not going to ask them to go over, but just read it. I mean, it really is a very, very nice summary of some really important work that's going on right now in our schools. I thought it would be a good article. Yeah. That's really impressive. Thank you both. Anything else, Elaine? That's it. 6.2, Administrative Comp Review Committee Update. We haven't been able to meet since we last met as a Board, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 28th, at 5:00. And the purpose for that meeting is for that committee to meet with Elaine and just get a sense of, a feedback that she's gotten from other administrators as she's been able to share that work of that committee. And for those of you new to the CSSU Board, a year ago, this Board charged a committee to look at administrative compensation within the Supervisory Union, and to come back to this Board with recommendations for a model, a structure. And the committee met throughout the past year, and I would encourage you to meet with the person who sits on that committee, who's from your local Board, to go over that, if you need any updates on any of it, or give one of us a call or an email, but we'll review this again with you, as we consider how to roll it out. And what we did is we met with Frank Sadowski of Gallagher and Flynn, who has human resource expertise, and he met with us for a few meetings, some of the meetings we met along, some of the meetings we invited Elaine to, and Russ was incredibly instrumental to that committee in helping to put together a matrix that helps us look at our different categories of how we pay people and a structure for that. And Russ, I don't know if you want to just say a word or get that?
Not until after we meet again, I guess.
Okay.
And is there some feedback building?
Well-
Does Charlotte have someone?
Lynn was on that, and she had volunteered to come back for the next meeting, so you can talk with her, and if you'd like to come to the next meeting, you're more than welcome to. It wasn't necessarily by building, it was as much of interest to the interests.
Colleen, which time slot, is that, is it eight in the morning or five in the evening?
Five.
Okay, thanks.
And it's here in the library.
Okay.
And I'll send a reminder. And it's going to be the committee with Elaine. Okay, now, Discussion Matters. Cindy, I gave you some time to get ready for that one. 7.1, Policy Review, and 7.1.1, Job Description and Staffing.
So just in general about the policies involved, for Charlotte, I haven't changed the CBU's tonight.
So unless you have questions on each policy, I don't see any reason for me to go through all of them explicitly again unless there's a need here, but it's a role reversal. Usually I present it and then you go discuss it, so. So what we can do is just hit, you know, quickly, one by one, and just see if there are questions on this first one, and then we'll go to the next one. There are questions on the first one?
Because we had a lot of comments, but nothing that, and Lorna wrote them all down, so, right, so you're looking for like, did something come up at the CBU meeting that we needed an answer to?
Or if there's, if you feel like there's something burning that the whole Board needs to hash out, but my assumption is that each local Board hit on, like, the meeting.
And there are some questions from the different teams.
David's passionate about sports, hard time keeping quiet over there.
David, are you on the committee?
No.
No.
It's a good thing.
There was some question about whether, what does the legal statutes say about job descriptions and staffing and whether permanent positions have to be, why did we change it from Superintendent to Administration? Is that because of the statutes?
I know.
You did that policy.
During that particular discussion, it made more sense to reference the Administration because they're not always coming from the Superintendent. They're a local position, it's more likely coming from the Principal, hopefully after working with me. The permanent was only inserted in there because on occasion we will hire temps for a short-term purpose, and I guess we could bring it to the Board, but by the time we brought it to the Board for approval, we probably don't need it anymore. And we used to have Superintendent or Designee, we have that phrase, Superintendent or Designee, in a number of different-
Places instead of Administration, right?
And so perhaps that's a discussion back to the Policy Committee, because the Designee could be the local building Principal, but the buck stops here.
I don't feel so much a need to make it Superintendent versus Designee, versus Administration as much as we want to make sure we're not getting in trouble on statute, that's the way I thought of it.
So the thing that I wonder about, because even when I was sitting there, I was thinking about this, this says Positions, and so if you think of the Position as a potential hire without the hire, that the Position itself maybe could be a recommendation of Administration, but the hire is clear, the hire has to come through the Superintendent. So maybe that's the distinction, that this is a Position, I don't know. But anyways, there was quite a lot of conversation at the CBU Board about that. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this one? 7.1.2, D5 Substitute Teachers. Cindy, did you want to make a comment?
There's a single change in the reference from-
To local Boards to Supervisory Union Board, and that just reflects that all subs are hired at the SU, they're not hired locally. 7.1.4, DH Resignations. Cindy? Again, just a change from Superintendent Administration, most time reservations are submitted to the local Administration Board, I mean, not generally to the Superintendent. But again, we can have the Designee discussion, right? Anyone have any substantive comments on that? 7.1.5, D17, Chief Chair's Supervision and Evaluation. Cindy? This one is more substantive, sort of. What we tried to do in Number Two is make it align more with the Supervision and Evaluation System the Board already has. There was discussion originally when this policy was adopted in 2010, as what, do you actually need it? You have a Supervision and Evaluation System, but in the likelihood you still want one two years later, three years later, we just thought Number Two should be modified to more closely match the goals, development process in the system. And then Number Three, just changing it to a reference that will be happened when, as requested, as opposed to the nebulous regular basis. Anyone have any comments on this one that might be useful for all of us? And then, again, local Boards, with Josh?
We discussed in Williston wanting to have this report on a periodic basis, a little bit of this, trying to finish your allegations, as opposed to intermittent request.
Okay. Did everyone hear what Josh just said? So Williston requested to have it on a periodic basis instead of having it happenstance?
That's what we discussed, yes.
Okay, so maybe perhaps part of an annual report, there's how many were reviewed or something like that, something to that effect. How many on a cycle, how many intensive? And if the Board wanted that, we'd have to have a different discussion because we don't currently track that data. Okay. So perhaps bring this back to the Policy Committee and talk it out a little bit more? Because this is, this policy here goes back to work that started, gosh, a long, long time ago, and the committee has gone through these, this evolution where it started as it's one thing, then became something else, and so perhaps there needs to be a discussion about what is that committee as well. Yeah, if the Board wants a report on that, we can do that. Okay. All right, anything else? Okay.
You were going to do the last one. Public bidding.
7.1.6.
Nope.
Anything on the public bidding? And reminder that there were no changes to that, but we just don't want to lose that, right? It was part of the review cycle, but you did it last year, so the committee felt pretty confident you didn't need to look at it again. Thank you. I mean, that's awful to just bring it back as a reminder that these are on a cycle of review. Okay? Anything else? Okay, 7.2, I asked you to add a discussion matter, we'll debrief about this because I think we couldn't have a lengthier discussion, but let's just lay the groundwork and then figure out where we go next. And I'll start by noting that over the past few years, what I have heard from CBU Board Members is a sense of feeling underrepresented on the CSSU Board. And so the composition of this Board, as you know, the local districts, there are five members of the Board, St. George has one, historically, three of the five from the local Boards have sat on this Board. CBU with 11 Board Members, has three representatives, and so there's a sense of disproportionate representation. And so with interest in just having a discussion about that and what that means for our Board, for CBU representation, how do people feel, what do we do next, how do we explore, whether there should be an additional Board Member from CBU for representation, four members from the CBU Board, for example, on the CSSU Board. And would someone from CBU like to speak to that matter? David, as Chair?
CBU feels fairly strongly about this, the, we, the sense of the Board is that we really should have four members on the CSSU Board in order to adequately represent the CBU's perspective on- board in order to adequately represent the CBU's perspective on union issues for the Jean, can you add to that? Lorna?
We actually, our board today wanted to select four people.
Yes.
And we had to have a runoff situation, but one person decided that she would back out so that there's only three. But there actually were four people that.
And I would say that maybe one or two years, I think we've had four people wanting to be on the board and when, you know, it's our board chair and Lorna and Joan and I both are very active in a lot of committees and a lot of things. We have a lot of very, you know, CBU's got a big breadth of interests at the CSSU level and we want to participate in everything because it all affects CBU eventually. And so, you know, we're all trying to figure out how this was going to work and, you know, really it just, it just seems that with CBU sort of being the capstone and having its fingers in everything eventually, that it kind of makes sense for us to be on really participatory. And it's just a shame that we just keep, you know, having to leave personal.
And we let you use this building.
We got the light space.
That building in Shelburne that we need to use. Happy to hold the meetings there.
So prior to this meeting, I did not do the exploration of the procedures for doing that or, you know, vet it with other people. We haven't talked about it, board chairs meeting.
Well, we've talked about it conceptually at board chairs meeting in this way. For the local K eights, a majority of their board is sitting here at this table.
Right.
And for CBU, it's not even a third. You know what I mean? So that's the difference. You know, you've got a majority group here. You take an action and if all three of your board members vote for that action, you go back to your board. The vote's there. I mean, probably that's why it's designed by statute that way. For CBU, it's not even a third. So we have had this conversation at board chairs, just kind of conceptually though, not because there was.
But we haven't, we haven't talked about it, okay, this is what we would do, this is how we would go about doing it. It's just been a recognition.
Exactly.
That there's a different dynamic for CBU.
Right.
With representation here than there is that dynamic that happens at the local board.
Right.
Colleen, if I may. Josh?
I think there's another side to this about how it impacts our constituents in that I remember during our budget discussions a few months ago, there was talking about how we reallocate the formulas for whether CBU picks up a greater share or our local school districts. And notwithstanding the desire by CBU's very large board to have more opportunities to participate, it has the potential to shift the power on this board. And granted, we all try to make decisions by consensus, which I think is the right way to go, but, you know, Williston could be, make a good case saying, hey, we've got 50% of the constituency of this school district, we should have greater representation. So I just, I'm not advocating for that, but I do think you raise, when you open that door, you're going to raise questions that arguably could go beyond the interest being expressed.
Russ?
Yeah, I was at the meeting where, and I think it was CY and how those costs were allocated, that, you know, it was an interesting conversation. But, you know, even if all 11 members of CBU's board were added to the CSSU board and then it continued to be three each from the four locals, we can still outvote them if everybody shows up. So, you know, in terms of the, you know, the K to eight high school dynamic, adding another board member or two, I don't think really changes very much in terms of how some of these allocation decisions are going to sugar out. You know, it, I think as far as the committee assignments and, you know, ability to serve on that, the three members from most of the local boards, you know, I think that the local boards have representation on just as many or all of the committees as CBU does. I can understand if, you know, you want to have more, you know, to spread that wealth a little bit and, you know, maybe not have quite as much of that burden on the three members that are currently there, because there are a lot of committees and they do take up a lot of time. I guess, you know, so I'm not sure I've got a strong opinion one way or the other at this point, but I'd be interested to know just a little bit more about the history. And I know we didn't, you know, didn't really have time to really go, you know, prepare, but a little bit more history about how we got there and what exactly the legal, you know.
You want me to do that? Well, no, not now, because I don't think that we're going to be in a position to move forward with fully fleshing this out. But what we can do is have statute and a history of the.
It's not complicated. It's, there are two pieces of statute that address it. And I'm not thinking that it would be so that you could, you're not going to make a decision tonight, but it might be good for people to know, well, if they wanted to do something, here is the one way you can.
Right. We can do that. But I, what I'm hearing from Russ is something that's a little more fleshed out, but I could be wrong. But.
You know, if it's, if it's very cut and dry.
It's requesting a waiver from the state board.
Right.
Go ahead.
So the three, the three members from CBU is, that's state law right now?
Here's what the state law says. For the purpose of holding meetings and transacting the business of a supervisory union, the school board of any district assigned to a supervisory union, so Williston, Shelburne, Charlotte, Heinsberg and CBU, we'll get to St. George in a minute, and having more than three members, that's all of you, shall elect from such board three members who shall represent and act for it in meetings of the supervisory union to which it is assigned. But the school board of any district which employs no teacher shall have only one vote in said supervisory union meeting. That is the legislation that says how you will configure an SU board. So if you've got more than three members, you get three. If you had three members, all three of yours could be there. In a separate section, same section, separate lettering, upon application by a supervisory union board, the state board may waive any requirements of chapter five or seven, that's where this is all held, of this title with respect to the supervisory union board's structure, board composition, or board meetings, or the staffing pattern, blah, blah, blah. So there is a way to change it. You can say, you could make, if you wanted to, this board could ask the chair to send a letter to the state board of education and say, notwithstanding section blah, 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 we are asking that you waive that. So it isn't something that by adding a member, now you open the door forever. You'd still always be in a situation where you'd need to go back to the state board if you wanted to do something different.
And the current structure goes back to, I believe, something like 1969 when the SU was formed and the CBU was formed as a centralized high school. So it's been around, this current structure has been around for a very long time.
1953.
So we'll put some flesh around it in the next month.
Yeah.
One, is it something that would be decided here or that has to be talked about locally?
That's a good question.
Well, it says the supervisory union board, upon application by a supervisory union board.
And the thing is, is that I, you know, I, I mean, I think we know how CBU board feels, but there might be discussion at the local level that we're not thinking about or haven't fully fleshed out. I don't know what that discussion would be, I can't even imagine. But we do know that people like to feel included in significant changes and this is a, it's not a huge change. I don't think it would necessarily change the dynamics of this board, but it is a structural change. Russ?
I was curious, you know, how much of it is related to the, you know, you're outvoted.
You know, I was going to make the point, I don't think, I know that I did not vote against the CY thing. I was okay with CBU taking up more. So I think you go, I kind of don't like the implication that CBU said, no way, we're voting against it. You know, I think David worked really hard to temper it a year, but I think.
So then is three of you not adequate to adequately represent the view of the CBU board? I mean, I recognize that, you know, we have a unique situation, or we have a different situation than you do in that, yes, we've got a majority of our board and as long as the three Shelburne representatives or Charlotte representatives are for it, it goes back and it's, you know, unless somebody presents a really compelling case in the, in the local board discussion, it's a done deal. You know, whereas you've got a very different, potentially a different situation taking that back.
It's more the other way, Russ. It's the other way, is that, you know, trying to go back with three voices and eight people who are new to it, you know, it's, it's, sometimes we get turned around. It's a little frustrating and it's hard to make the case when you don't have enough voices to do it.
David?
Just to be clear, this is not anything about a paragraph.
No.
It has nothing to do with that. The, I mean, simple mathematics makes it obvious that adding another CBU member doesn't mean CBU is going to dominate any votes. So it has nothing to do about that. What it does have to do about is getting another, a fourth voice for CBU's perspective on issues that are confronting this, this union. And that's, that's pretty useful because we, we are in the same union, but we're different grades, we're different age kids, there's just, there's just, there's a different perspective and it's a fourth voice. And, and quite frankly, it's, it's another opportunity to have someone who is, contributes to what goes on at the supervisory union board.
Elaine?
Well, I would just point out that it's the same kids at a different age, right? And they're all our kids. And this is the only place where we really address K-12. You know, so that's the other piece. And I know that that doesn't necessarily swing that one way or the other, but I think that that's the piece that I'd want people to be thinking about. How do we do that in a better way rather than like, well, where are the votes? More like, here is the opportunity that we have around this table to think about our kids in their entire public school education spectrum. And does it help if there are four voices from CBU who can then go back and share with the rest of their colleagues, here's what they talked about? Honestly, when I hear the conversations, whether it's about CY or whatever, I am encouraged. I think that this board really does behave almost universally as if they're all our kids. And I think that's a good thing. I think this is a good problem to have, however it gets resolved.
It's a great problem to have because we have people that want to serve on the board.
Exactly.
That's an awesome problem. Kathy?
Can you, can you explain to me a little bit more why you feel four would represent your board better than three?
It's another, it's another voice. It's another person who is involved in the ins and outs of the CBU issues. So it provides, it provides the opportunity to better give a complete perspective of the nine through 12 kind of vision of this entire union. So that's all it is. It's, it's just, it's widening, it's giving it a little more breadth so that, so that the entire perspective of, or a better perspective of CBU's issues are presented.
Okay. So Kelly?
Could I even see that in the reverse? Correct me if I'm wrong, from what I was hearing Jean say, that sometimes it's difficult for the three of you to go back as educators in that capacity to describe what we're doing here at CSSU to your board. And in effect, you spend a lot of time sort of re-teaching or discussing what we've already discussed, whereas if there is another person to add to that effort, you're not only getting the balance that you need here, but you're getting the balance on your CBU board. Is that a fair way to look at it?
That's perfectly correct, yeah. It will be very helpful.
I was going to say, it goes both ways. If we have more CBU on this board, the chances of presenting accurately, we have diverse views on CBU work. We have some interesting conversations, people don't always agree, and I think that actually is good to bring here. And you should know that. And I think it just increases the chance of that happening by 25%. And then the other way around, we will hear more about what goes on here, which is the only pre-K to 12 group at CBU. And it will, I think, increase the probability that that will be done accurately and well.
If anyone?
The only other suggestion I have is that we should probably have, where 11 members is six members on the board.
That's what I was going to say.
So the majority of CBU board would be on here. And we all will just move down a little bit, there's plenty of room.
We need another table.
No, over here, you know, it's no problem.
Well, I mean, another consideration is shrinking the CBU board.
That's inconsiderate.
So I think you've, this discussion has given us all food for thought and there's no need for us to make any hasty decisions tonight. We'll come back with this as an agenda item next month. And meanwhile, you can talk to whomever you want to talk to in your local boards.
Can you make that an action item so that we can move forward if we choose to and not have too many meetings where.
Yeah. And then if we choose to postpone, we can do that. Yeah. We will do that. Any other last comments on that before we move on? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Eight point O, action matters. Eight point one, need a motion to adopt the 175-day K-12 regional calendar, 2013 to 2014. In a second.
Second.
Elaine, you want to just?
This is pro forma. This is the regional calendar, this is the calendar that we have to adopt based on our high school students attending the Essex and Burlington Tech Center. Next month, you'll see the calendar that will have then the professional development and parent teacher conference days slotted in. And the five days, the extra five days.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting the regional calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Eight point two, we need to have a motion to appoint facility supervisors as the designated person for each school building to ensure compliance with requirements of asbestos management plans. May I have a motion to present those appointed people as presented?
Salute.
In a second.
Second.
Discussion. Bob, did you want to say anything about this?
It's relatively straightforward, though it surfaced that this hasn't existed for years and years and years, as Dave Kelly and I reviewed what he needs to have ready tomorrow morning at nine o'clock for an audit. So it would be appreciated mostly by he and I if you take quick action and Colleen would give me the sheet of paper he and I need.
Okay. So a good question, is this like an annual appointment or this one has a change?
It's a good question, Jean. The designation lasts forever, but when the law is structured that way, they very often end up with a letter in the file that's 15 years old and the person is retired 10 years ago. So I'm going to have to work some sort of a system that Elaine and I regularly monitor it so we make sure we've got valid employees designated.
When one of these guys retires, some little flag goes up and says, oops, remember.
Yeah. We'll figure out a way to do that.
This could become my new favorite thing, the brush notes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the side? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. Nine point O, consent agenda. We haven't pulled anything out of that, so we're going to have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. And a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Ten point O, confirming the next meeting dates, just next CSSU board chairs meeting, March 19th, and just want to make sure that the admin comp review committee has on their calendars Thursday, March 28th at 5:00, CBU library classroom. And then we'll need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and negotiations update.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And so we'll leave the room and I didn't identify a location for us.